Okay, I have 6:00 PM. We'll call this regular June Board Meeting to order. Before we begin, I'd like to make a brief remark that we were sad to learn this week of the passing of a former board member and board chairman, Jerry Andrews. And we're very appreciative of his longtime service to our district. And the board would like to let Peggy, his wife Peggy, and their family know they're in our prayers during these difficult times. Without further ado, we have a special guest with us tonight, Pastor Chad Elliott of the Jasper Campus of Revolution Church. Would you come forward, please, and deliver our invocation?
Thank you for the honor to be able to do this. Let's pray. God, thank you for what you're doing in this county, in this place, the things that we can see and the things that we can't. God, we trust in you, and God, we just ask that you would continue to move and give us direction. Most of all, we pray for wisdom. And I know, God, in meetings like this, we often pray for wisdom, for what to do and the decisions that we make. God, I know that at no other time do we need more wisdom than we need now. And so, God, I pray that, as your word tells us, that you give it liberally when we ask. So, I'm asking in this meeting, on behalf of this board and these leaders, that, God, that you would pour out your wisdom, that we would know it, we would feel it, God, and you would come upon these decisions, and, God, we would step boldly. This board and these administrators and teachers would step boldly in the next steps of what you have for this school system. God, we pray for insight with so much going on and so much information that we don't know and so many things that are coming at us all the time. God, we just pray for insight, to be able to see maybe things that we can't see with our physical eye, but, God, that you would convict us, give us knowledge that we don't readily have, that can only come from you, that comes in a spiritual sense, not just by our own human knowledge, but it comes from you. God, I pray for unity, because no matter what, if we make great decisions, but we're not unified in those decisions, a lot of times they fall apart. And we know that in leadership, making good decisions at the right time leads to prosperity. And, God, we know that when we make those decisions, we have to be unified, we have to come together. So, God, I pray for a sense of unity among this board, in the leadership of this school system, with our teachers, bus drivers, custodians, security officers, all that are involved in making this whole system work. God, I pray that you would pull them together, bind them, unite them, so they stand together and they move forward with confidence in what you're doing. God, we love you, we thank you, and I pray that you just be with this meeting, in this meeting, in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much, Pastor Chad. We appreciate you being with us, your prayers and support, and wish you and your congregation all the best in your new church.
I appreciate that.
Next, we have another special guest, Mr. Jim Bresch, and I want to tell you a little bit about his story real quick, if you'll give me the pleasure. Jim Bresch was drafted in the Army at 20 years of age in 1965. He was sent to Vietnam in 1966 as a squad leader. During his year of combat duty, he was awarded three Bronze Stars and a Purple Heart. He gratefully returned home and was honorably discharged in 1967. He went on to have a 45-year career as a Vice President of Human Resources at several companies. And his last two years prior to retirement were spent in a company that was voted number one in the Orlando Sentinel Best Places to Work Competition. He has been a resident of Pickens County for five years and is currently the Commander of American Legion Post 149 here in Pickens County. So, we have the honor tonight to have Commander Jim Bresch, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
I feel old after hearing all that. So, most people wonder about the protocol. It was pretty simple. For civilians, you stand, you face the flag, you put your right hand over your heart, you remove your hat, which is not a problem here. For military, current and veteran, you may leave your hat on and you use your hand salute. I don't know if any of you are veterans, so just so you know what to do. And if I may, let's be grateful, we live in a county that still honors the country and its symbols. Sorry about that. It's the whole veteran thing. All right, let's do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it. And I too am glad we still say the Pledge of Allegiance in our board meetings. At this time, have the approval of the agenda. Dr. Townsend, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, yes, sir.
I apologize. I thought we had an addition for it, and... We have a additional presentation?
I believe Chris Williams is on there. Yes, it's...
Superintendent Report E.
We do, we do. It's going to be our Athletic Director, Chris Williams.
The amendment will be under Superintendent Reports, Subitem E.
And we will not have a report from Stacy. He is out and everything's going well in operations, so no B.
Okay, so we'll remove Subitem B, and instead of the addition, it'll be Subitem D, and we'll make it all fall in order, Ms. Morton. Athletic Department update by A.D. Chris Williams will be the added item. Okay, now here are the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Pushed by Mr. Smith, I hear a second. Second by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and unopposed. The agenda is approved, and that brings us down to Section 5. Superintendent Reports, Dr. Townsend.
Okay, thank you. And our first report tonight will be from Ms. Amy Smith, our CFI.
Long time no see. We were here last night, in case y'all don't know, having a budget workshop, and covered about 92 pages of that budget workshop. So, we entertained the board for quite a while. Everything went very well, I think. We'll give you an update for May. The general fund, we collected for May, 87% of our budgeted revenue. As y'all know, we talked about last night, some of our revenue flow has slowed down a little bit due to a few of the local entities being closed over the last few months. We hope that slump will pick up a little bit. The expenditures, we expended 78.91% of our approved budget for the expenditures. We're still on target. We are going to ask for a couple of amendments tonight. Our capital projects for Sploes, we collected $488,039.26 for the month of May. Apparently, Pickens County residents are still buying everything in Pickens County, so buy local, we'll keep supporting all our local vendors. Interest earned for the month of May was $1,007.36. Expenditures totaled $941,432.11, and the month-end Sploes balance was $2,630,14.46. After, if y'all choose to approve the budget amendment tonight, part of that is the remainder of the transfer of designated funds for the PJ, Pickens Junior High School project. We have now expended the amount of money we had designated. I had only budgeted about $5 million of that, but that project has grown by leaps and bounds, and we have completed it quite a bit faster than I thought we were going to. So, we're going to go ahead and transfer that money as soon as we have approval. So, do y'all have any questions on those items? And of course, always happy to report, we have no debt.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Okay. Next will be our Chief Technology Officer, Patrick Shea, regarding the learning management system.
Come on down. Good evening. As I reported last month, we were actively beginning our search for a learning management system for Pickens County to enhance our presence online with the response to the COVID and the digital learning and the distance learning that was happening at the time. I'm pleased to say that we are deep in reviews. We're down to two finalists that we believe are very strong contenders, and the third option would be to just enhance what we're doing now. It's in the hands of the teachers right now for some final reviews. We'll come back together, and I hope to have a recommendation within the next week or so. I'm pretty sure that you guys are going to have more workshops regarding budgets coming up soon, so we might try to squeeze something in there if we have a recommendation before July. That's what we're shooting for, so that we can have something in place, and we have a plan going into July, so that when we... The anticipation is to begin August 3rd with a full school of students, and we would have this in place for that. That would give us plenty of time to do any additional training that we would need to do, make sure that parents were informed of any changes that might happen. Teachers would be ready, as well as we would have to introduce a new platform possibly to students as well. So, all of that would need to come together. So, we hope to have a recommendation here within the next week. We met the other day and did some reviews on two of them, and now we've sent links home to teachers to play with and do some online reviews and to kind of pick it apart, see what they like, what they don't like, and hopefully come to a consensus that we would feel comfortable presenting to the board. So, I'm actively anticipating getting some good answers, hopefully at the beginning of next week. We've given until Friday to hopefully get back to us. So, that's all we have to report for at this point in time. Any questions regarding that?
Let me just clarify. I've heard you say that we are hoping, planning to start August 3rd.
Yes, that's our anticipation.
Okay. Depending on how everything else works. But at that same time, the virtual school will be up and running and ready to go?
That's our anticipation.
Great. Just wanted to clarify.
When we open up school, we'll open up all facets of Pickens County schools.
Definitely.
Great. So, we'll make sure that the public heard that.
Yes. Any other questions?
No. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is going to be a report regarding our Pickens County Educational Task Force. We're excited about that. We had a meeting this past Tuesday, and we brought together community members, parents, teachers, admin, to really plan for August 3rd. We've broken into groups. If you look at the sheet before that, it will be page 16 in your notebooks, if you have a notebook. Basically, you see the chairs, the co-chairs of the different meetings, groups that we have, teams. You have accountability, operations, HR, finance, technology, instruction, and special ed and special services, which isn't listed at this time. And what we're trying to do is come up with a thorough plan, a comprehensive plan for August 3rd. We understand that there will be different stages. If you go to the next slide, you'll see on page 17, we've got some guidelines for Georgia's Path to Recovery. And you'll see three stages, basically. You'll see the low spread stage, low spread or no spread. You'll see minimum moderate stage, and you'll see the substantial stage. Basically, in that low spread or no spread, you go back to school with a few safeguards, of course, with the sanitizing of the rooms, of course, and the handwashing and spreading out a little bit. You'll see more of an op, masks would be optional. You'll see more of a traditional type school going on five days a week. In your moderate spread, you still come to school, more spatial distancing, you may have more modifications, such as maybe eating classrooms more, really spreading out as much as possible, washing hands, sanitizing, of course, your hands, using hand sanitizers. But more additional protocols in place, procedures in place to meet the needs of the kids during this stage. And that's really going to be determined by the Department of Public Health, DPH. And then, of course, you've got your substantial stage, and basically, we'll be doing what we did in the spring, but with a little more planning involved before then, a blended mix of the virtual learning. It won't be the Pickens Virtual that we have in place already for the full-time Pickens Virtual students, but it would be a combination of activities where our teachers would, by then, have learned the procedures for the LMS and learning how to use it. We plan to do some during pre-planning and other times to help train the teachers to use it. Should be more user-friendly for parents and teachers and students to use. It'll give the parents and students and really teachers more tools to use inside a virtual classroom. And so, we'll be preparing for that. We've created this task force to get ready for those different stages. We want to be ready, we're pretty much ready now for the low no-spread stage. We understand that pretty well. But we do want to be ready for that moderate stage. And the change, the guidelines are about to, DPH. You should be coming out next Monday, some new guidelines of how they're going to classify each county, and they're going to update it every week, what stage you're in. For the longest, Pickens County was in the low, the no-spread stage, based on the number of people who were hospitalized or tested positive. But now, we're moving it to a new type of system where it's going to be based on the type testing they have, and it could push most systems to a moderate stage. If they do that, we'll be prepared for it. And so, we'll still have school. We'll just have a few more modifications in place. Masks will still be optional, of course. So, we want to take it, an approach where we're thorough, we're cautious. Safety of the kids and staff are most important. Instruction, though, is important as well. We want to meet the needs of kids, social, emotional, as well. That's important. We understand some kids will have a hard time coming back. We've been through some trainings where they said, well, be careful with the staff, too. They'll have to get used to coming back in a day-to-day format. I know it'll take admin a little bit of time to get used to coming back. So, everything we're doing now, we'll be preparing for August 3rd. And so, we're looking forward to another school year, and we're not sure what it's going to look like exactly, whether it's that low spread, moderate spread, or substantial spread stage. But whichever it is, I think we'll be prepared. We've got a good team in place. They've worked hard. It was nice to see and good coverage by the media outlets this week regarding what happened Tuesday, and really proud of how all of Pickens County's coming together, where these businesses, business people took off, parents took off, took time out of their jobs or their daily lives to help support the schools and give their feedback. And we're still asking for that support. We sent out a survey last week. We had over 1,700 respondents. For a small school system, that's amazing. That is amazing. So, it shows you the community engagement, how they bought into Pickens County education, and really appreciate them doing that. So, that's kind of what's happening right now, and we're looking forward to carrying out that plan and be glad to answer any questions about it. And, okay, well, again, the task force is in progress, and we'll keep you updated on that, and appreciate your support. And the next report, and I want to apologize to Coach Williams, come on down, I'll let you go next, and did not leave him off the agenda on purpose. For some reason, I had a sticky note, and I wanted to learn not to use a sticky note. I'm going to have to write it down in the book and make those changes. So, thank you for being here tonight, and appreciate your update on what we're doing with athletics over the summer. And as you know, we've talked before, athletics is important, music's important, drama, band, CTAE, all that's important outside the regular classroom to help those kids grow and help them get ready to go back to school as well. So, appreciate what you and your coaches are doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to come forward and share a little bit about what's going on in Dragon Nation. We're glad to be back at it. I had several phone calls and emails and people on the street up to this past Monday when we're getting started back. So, this past Monday, on the 8th, the George High School Association allowed us to come back on campus for conditioning only, which meant no sports-specific stuff or anything like that. So, I put together that sheet for you there. As you can see, those bullet points below is what came to us from the GHSA. That is the recommended guidelines that they sent to us. You see they're highlighted in yellow, so starting the 25th of, excuse me, June 15th, we're allowed 25 people in a group instead of 20. That includes the coaches and everything. That was sent out today by Don Corr from the GHSA. So, originally, it was 20, including the coaches. You could have 19 kids and one coach, or 18 and two. Now, I guess because systems have a lot of kids, you know, more interested, they're going to be able to allow more kids to come in these groups. Right now, the largest group we have, I believe that's like 17, 16, 17 kids, plus the coaches. That allows more eyes. They can, they fill the group up to make it 20, but they had coaches that, you know, or had added coaches in the beginning to make it, to make it work. And I won't bore you by going through all those bullet points there, but as you can see, those are pretty stringent guidelines, and we needed those. And it was just good to get the kids back on campus. They'd been deconditioned for about two months. The vast majority of those kids did not push themselves, I guess, like they needed to at home. Some did some workouts, but a lot of them, when I went and looked in the weight room the other day, I saw a lot of them had been eating. So, I guess that's a good thing. Maybe that'll help them in the fall as well. But there's never been a time, I think, more critical for us to all come together, the board, central office staff, administration, parents, individual coaches of these sports, to do what's best for these kids. And so far, from what I'm seeing, that is the case. I believe we're going above and beyond to try to make sure that, number one, our kids are okay, they're getting what they need or what they needed at home, and then we'll worry about the sports aspect. But if the kid's not eating well or doing what they need to do to take care of themselves, then it's not going to be of any benefit to them. So, we're looking forward to continuing work with these coaches, and we're very happy to see these kids on campus. It's very organized when they come on to campus. Different groups meet in different parts of the parking lots. The coaches are there to meet them, walk them to the weight room. Parents have been great. We asked them to be sure they were prompt in picking up their child. So, they get there, pick them up, that parking lot empties, and the other one is being dropped off as they're leaving, and the other one's coming in, and it works real well. If you'll see on that second page, you can see that the, even though we can't do sports-specific things, such as using a football or softball or volleyball or anything, like I have groups that are coming primarily on our campus at this time, our kids preparing for football season, and, of course, it was open to all the other groups as well, but basketball, volleyball, softball, wrestling, they decided not to do anything during June. They're going to wait and see what kind of guidance we get from the GHSA at the end of June, and then we have the dead week, and then after the dead week, see if they allow anything sports-specific. I'm assuming basketball for this summer is not, is coming, they'll go, because usually June's the month for camps and all those things that they normally do, and then they're done. So, my thought is that once we come back after the dead week, that the sports that are going to be in-season for the fall will start doing like they normally do, and those that are not will be doing out-of-season things. So, basketball will still be, I think, three, four kids to a coach per workout, doing things like that. So, I know they're trying to get things wrapped up for the fall. Our softball team has not even had the opportunity to have tryouts yet. So, once you, once we get back to the dead week after that July 4th weekend, we're going to be wide open on our campus. But right now, you see, we have three sessions going at our high school in the morning, 7:45 all the way through to about 11 o'clock. In conjunction with the first two sessions, we also have two sessions going at PJ, at the junior high, Dr. Flatt and Michael Parker. It was very helpful to get us, our groups over there as well, just causing the numbers. And we didn't want to avoid going 12:30, 1 o'clock in the afternoon and getting so hot, so we can get those two groups over with there, even though there's not a weight room, it's a lot of younger kids, and there's been a lot of body movement things, and just trying to get their conditioning, and that's working out real well at this time. Again, we're hoping that once we get to the end of this month, starting the 1st of July, things will go a lot smoother, and we'll be able to add some more activities and get sport-specific. If not, we're going to be in trouble running into August and September. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do that. The only other group we have meeting at this time doing any work at all is the cross-country team. They always spend their summers at Roper Park anyway, in that area. So, they have been meeting there, following the protocol, you know, checking the temperature, monitoring the students every day. Both groups are doing that. And we have had about 85 kids coming on to campus, basically the football team. And then, we've had 12 cross-country participants, which not too many people like to get up and run every day. So, we've had nine males and three females that have participated there, but all that's done at Roper Park with Coach White and Coach Cantalutz, and you can see their schedule there. The boys are going Monday through Friday, and the girls are meeting three days a week. But that may change as we get on, you know, further on in approach to the, to the season. But cheerleading, I think, is going to start opening up before long, allowing them to do some things. Right now, we had already had our tryouts. So, the state is allowing those groups that did not have tryouts to do virtual tryouts, but luckily, we already had that completed. And Ms. Petty did a great job of that and getting ready for those girls to go farther into the season. ABM has done a great job, give you a little idea of what goes on in the weight room. Our coaches and our kids, they have groups of two. We've got several racks in there, do the, how the weight room was redone a couple of years ago. Plenty of room. A kid will do all his work, for example, on a bar. Once he's done with all of his sets, sprayed down with hydrogen peroxide water, wiped down, sanitized, and then he and his partner will switch in whatever equipment that the other person is using, and it sanitizes weight. Then, once that group is done, leaves the room, then there's about 15, 20, 25-minute break in there in between groups coming in. ABM then comes in and sprays down again and cleans before the next group comes in. Then, after the third group, at the end of the day, they come in with a backpack mister and puts a mist of the hydrogen peroxide and water all over everything, and it sets all night. So, they come back in the next morning, it's ready to go. So, they've been, Russ and his crew's been great to work with, and they give us everything that we need, and the coaches have been very particular in how they handled those situations as well, trying to maintain social distancing and all those protocols. They're doing a real good job of that. So, that's pretty much it in the nutshell. Anything that I can answer for you guys, I'll be glad to try to do so.
I've got a quick question. Thanks for all this information. It looks like everybody's done a great job.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you got any guidance as far as how our fall schedules are going to look coming up?
At this time, no, ma'am. They are very closely lived down south. They haven't sent us a whole lot of information. So, it's my understanding, if everything continues to get better, it'll be, it'll be normal. The national, for example, the National Federation of High Schools sent out some guidance yesterday concerning Marching Bank. Of course, I know that's not my area, but, you know, they're already planning on allowing that to get started. So, they're looking at going, you know, like normal, if possible.
Good. Thank you. My understanding, when we had a conversation, Dr. Townsend, was that any student that is enrolled in virtual school would be eligible to play sports? Is that still the case?
As long as it's allowed by Georgia High School Association.
Okay.
We'll have to go by the rules and guidelines, and we'll adopt those.
Okay, great.
I believe that is my understanding. I can offer that question to former A.D., Coach Parker. But as long as they're full, basically, full-time enrolled, and we're getting MTE, then they're one of our students.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
It's good to see the kids back in action, it really is. I know they're just conditioning, but I think it's good. And, Ms. Ring, that concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Thank you, as always, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Shea, and Ms. Williams. Appreciate that. Bring us down to Section 6 Action Items. Subitem A, approval personnel. Sub item A, approval of personnel. We all had a chance to review that. Do I hear a motion to approve the P.A.R. as recommended?
I'll make the motion.
Pushed by Ms. Ennis, any further, oh, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed.
Mr. Green, sorry for the interruption regarding action item B. We noticed just now, just a minute ago, a couple of dates got inverted from last year's spending resolution. And so we just wanted to clarify, if you look at the first paragraph, first date's going to be July 1, 2020, ending June 30, 2021. Then if you go to the last paragraph, it'll be due in July. When it says expenditures, known to be due in, it should not be September, it'll be July. So if we can make those notations for the record, we again apologize for that.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. We'll make note of that. Ms. Smith, would you give a, we're familiar with for public knowledge, would you explain why we're going to approve this spending resolution here, a second?
Certainly.
Or why we need the spending resolution?
Anytime we do not have an approved budget in place, we must have permission from the board to spend money beginning July 1st. So at this time, with our unusual circumstance that we have this year, we do not have a tentative or an initial budget approved by the board. So we ask for a spending resolution for the month of July. It allows us to spend up to 1/12 of the approved expenditures for the prior year for the month of July 2020. And each month that we would need to continue, we would still have to come back to the board and ask for one month at a time until we do have an approved budget in place. So with this situation, not having information from the state and the federal authorities and not having a budget ready just yet, we'll continue to do this until we have an appropriate budget in place.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. With that, I hear a motion to approve a spending resolution for July to reflect amended with corrected dates. Pushed by Mr. Smith, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed. Sub item C, FY '20 budget amendment. Ms. Smith went over these with us already. Any questions for her? Are we good? None being, I hear a motion to approve that budget amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Pushed by Ms. Ennis, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed, budget amendment is approved. Sub item D, approval of ABM service agreement for 2020, 2021, for the upcoming school year. As we discussed in our budget workshop yesterday, if the minutes could reflect that with the anticipation that this contract, custodial contract would go back out to bid beginning in preparation for the next year's cycle. Any questions on that? Are we good on the ABM?
Correct, yeah. That's, basically, when you do a contract like this, you want to, to get a good company, you're going to pretty much have to use them three years in a row. And so we'll make sure it's competitive every three years. We'll make sure of that.
I hear a motion to approve the ABM service agreement for 2020, 2021?
I'll make that motion to approve the ABM contract.
Motion by Ms. Finley, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed. Sub item E, approval of STAR 360 contract. Dr. Townsend, can you give us a little information on that, please?
Basically, this is going to be something the schools use for the benchmarking process, kind of see where they're at. And this helps us, gives us the data we need for the teachers to use to help, help see where the kids are at and move forward. This is something we'll be using in all the schools.
This is a program?
Wouldn't say a program itself, it's more of a checking where they're at, what instructional level's at, assessing their levels, basically. It'll be a standard across the board, so we'll kind of compare where each kid's at during the benchmarking process.
Any questions on that? This total is just shy of $47,000. I hear a motion to approve the STAR 360 contract.
I'll make the motion.
Pushed by Ms. Ennis, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed. Sub item F, approval of minutes. This is for the May 14th call meeting and May 14th regular meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review. I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Pushed by Ms. Ennis, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed, as minutes are approved, Ms. Morton. And sub item G, approval of surplus buses. This is standard that we do with cycling out of our buses and we always do. Any questions on that? None being, I hear a motion to approve that surplus as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith, I hear a second.
Second.
By Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed, the surplus is approved as presented. Section 70, more comments? None being. Section 8, I hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, Ms. Morton.
Motion by Ms. Finley and a second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and none opposed, we are adjourned at 6:35 PM. Appreciate you all being here tonight.